Bye, the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we're going to grant Westcat permission to videotape the meeting and ask if anyone else wishes to record the meeting. Seeing none, move along to the chairman's update. First, we would like to welcome our new selectman, Mr. John Hickey, to the Board of Selectmen. He's our newest elected member. John and his wife Wendy moved to Westwood in 2007, where they've resided on Sexton Avenue with their twin boys and a girl, a four-year-old boy. John and Wendy love the community and wanted to be more actively involved, and John has a law degree from Suffolk University. Good one, John. He's been the Director of Employee and Labor Relations at Boston Medical Center since 2014. He has also worked for Mackwater Resources, six years as the Labor Management Relations and Workers' Compensation Assistant Manager. John's also an adjunct professor at Suffolk University, where he taught Human Resources. John's education, history and education demonstrate he's very accomplished, especially in the field of Human Resources. John experiences both the private and public sector and provides him with an understanding, appreciation of differences in employee relations in both sectors. He was recently appointed by the Board of Selectmen to serve on the Denham-Westwood Water Commission. Congratulations, John. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you here.
I should note my employment history includes working with Sheriff Bellotti.
Eight-two, remember eight-two?
Okay.
A long time ago.
But they didn't go back that far.
You're sitting early 90s, wasn't that fun?
Ninety-two, ninety-two. You were Finney, right? Were you a Finney? Yeah.
All right. We'd also like to remind everyone that the Westwood Cares is hosting, is sponsoring a social host liability presentation. On Wednesday, June 1st, it'll be at the auditorium at the high school, starting at 7:00. The night will provide a presentation from Kathy Sullivan called Sharing Taylor's Message, and our own attorney, Mary Ann LeBlanc, to discuss legal issues and a panel discussion comprised of school, police and community members about social host liability. We encourage everyone to attend. And finally, we would like to remind everyone that the town of Westwood will hold its Memorial Day Parade and ceremonies to take place on Monday, May 30th, in 2016. The parade will form behind Town Hall, around Town Hall, depending on how it's set up at that time. And it'll step off promptly at 10:00 in the morning, proceed down Route 109 to the Old Westwood Cemetery for Memorial Day observances. Following these ceremonies, the parade will reform and return back to Town Hall. We hope to see everyone there on Monday, May 30th.
Mike, what do you think the parking situation will be around here?
Oh, they're saying they'll be all set up. Yeah.
Okay.
They'll be ready to go.
Guys are moving fast.
Yeah. They're paving, they've been paving.
Yeah, so the back areas paved.
All right, now to our scheduled action, the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen usually begins its first meeting after town meeting with the appointment of a member to serve as a chairperson, also to serve as the clerk, and then our third member. And I think Nancy knows how this works. So, John, would you like to make a motion? Can I make a motion now that I'm getting out or no? Not yet?
Probably because John does, you can make the next one.
So I would make a motion to nominate Nancy Hyde as the chair and Michael Walsh as the clerk.
Do one.
One at a time.
You do one at a time, okay. So, second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
You're out.
All right.
Kind of the way it goes.
Yep. You want to finish the rest of them? Okay.
That's kind of the way.
All right.
I love it.
No popping circumstance, no walking down the front steps?
Nope.
Just like that, we swap doors and move on.
As the camera keeps going.
Yes, sir.
Exactly. No time for cake.
No, no time for that. Okay.
How they do ye.
So now we'll take a motion to, for the clerk position?
I'll nominate Michael Walsh for clerk, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? And John, you have the privilege of being the third member.
The third member, yes.
I noticed that.
Aren't you lucky? Okay. So I'm just going to take a moment before we get into tonight's agenda. For the public, for you, Mr. Hickey, for others who have been somewhat watching the year, I'm just going to do a recap of the past year while Mr. Walsh was chair. And we have a really long list, but I'm going to highlight some of the many accomplishments for the board and the town over the past year. Early in the year, we had an eleven and a half million dollar bond issuance. I'm trying to remember what the rate on that was, but it was very low.
Three or something like that.
Very low, two percent range. And that just reflects the town's AAA bond rating from Standard and Poor's and good financial management that we continue to appreciate here. We've continued to analyze and fortunately have the opportunity to apply new tax revenue from University Station. And in addition to what we've been able to do to support the town's operating budgets and for the funding of the police headquarters, we've also been able to approve and have town meeting pass tax relief for our community, which is the first time we've had an active warrant article to do that. And then we also had the article passed to take a home rule petition to the state to allow the funding, future tax funding of tax relief for the seniors in the community. In terms of business development, we've seen a lot of activity from University Station over the past year, including many openings, Wegmans, Bonefish Grill, Not Your Average Joe's, Lifetime Fitness, the refurbishment of offices at 101 Station Drive, the opening of the Gables Apartments, and the senior memory care facility, Bridges. And we've also had the opening of the housing on University Avenue, which includes affordable housing units. And earlier this year, the planning board has issued the permit for the Marriott Residence Inn to be developed right near the Amtrak Station. So a lot of activity continuing to take place in University Station. We've also embarked on the review of the Islington Center and have the formation of the Islington Task Force. And Mr. Walsh serves on that with a lot of community representatives and staff from the town. That work is ongoing, but very important nonetheless. And while I'm on that, we'll say that the fire station's coming along, as we can all see, and hopefully an opening somewhat around the end of the year. So. That's, that's very good. Let's see. One of the things that was important earlier this year, it kind of went by unnoticed, but we had a bit of concern over the Denham Street corridor slip ramp off of 95, and it had been temporarily removed from the TIP financing plan, the Transportation Improvement Plan. But that has been reinstated. So that's very important for the region, including the town of Westwood. So in terms of facility improvements, I mentioned the fire station. And anybody who has a chance to go by Town Hall and look in the back, we've moved, taken the Girl Scout house down and started moving a lot of earth out there and creating a dedicated roadway to connect Deerfield Avenue to Westwood Glen Road. And that continues, and hopefully we'll see a nice tidy site for the formation of the Memorial Day Parade crowd. And that will be very nice, and we, many in the community will get to see that work. And that's only a small amount of the work that's going to be going on around here, starting in late July, early August for the police station?
August 1st.
August 1st. Okay. And we continue to have a lot of work done on energy efficiency in the town, including LED lights out in the community and just a lot of great things being done by our Energy Czar, Tom Philbin. And Public Works, we've had the installation of Safe Roots to School for the Downey School area, that's funded by Mast dot. And we have designed, bid and constructed a cemetery expansion. And we have continuing work being done in the Canton Everett Forbes Street area to address traffic calming needs in that vicinity, and we'll see some ongoing work there. And just a few more in terms of recreation. A lot of people were at it when we had the Little League Parade, the opening of the newly constructed Deerfield Athletic Fields. And that was funded through mitigation payments from University Station. And the town purchased land from First Parish Church adjacent to the high school. And we had the fourth rainy but successful Westwood Day, and we hope that next fall will be sunny as we'd like it. So just a few things that were done this past year, and thank you, Mr. Walsh, for your chairmanship during that time.
Thank you.
And welcome again to you.
Thank you.
So here we go. Okay. So onto the agenda for this evening. We're really happy to have with us Sheriff Michael Bellotti. We, how long has it been since you were last here? It's been a few years.
Geez, my recollection, it was several years ago, I think, a few years back.
Yeah. Wow, it's good to have you back.
Yeah.
Just a couple highlights, and I'll turn it over to you. Sheriff Bellotti was elected in November 1998, eighteen years ago. Wow.
Yeah.
You've been doing a lot of good work.
That was, I think. I remember.
Yeah. Well, you're still here, though. So we're glad to see that. So I, we're looking forward to hearing from you. I know you want to give us an update on some important state initiatives and love to know what you hope that Westwood can do to contribute to your good work. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Congratulations.
Gee, thank you.
And Michael, I really enjoyed working with you in that short period of time as chairman. Thirty seconds. At least here tonight. And John, John and I, we walked in with Chris Bell, actually, who's my Governor Affairs Director, walked into eight-two, 1993, you remember?
Yeah.
And that's when they kind of cattle herded all the new reps with their aids. And we then took our office space. So a lot of bonding goes on in that room in the first six months. But, you know, primarily I'm here to just kind of give you folks an update and to thank you kind of for all the different cooperations and the ability that we've had to work within your community, your police chief, fire chief, council agent director, you know, all the folks who kind of let us in a very small complimentary way, bring what I would call, you know, programs that maybe better served if we create them, like the I.O.K. program, Project Lifesaver. You know, we have K-9 units. I know you folks are fully staffed with K-9 units, but sometimes your police chief will call us to kind of do a backup on a drug search or some type of other situation like that. We don't really respond as much we do with some of the other towns because you're fully staffed, which is great. But, you know, again, we understand our role. We're care and custody, but we do have about a hundred out of 200 correction officers who are sworn deputies who do work in the community, whether it's doing details, Metro Look, which is a regional police tactical team, which, you know, your chief is very involved in now. And, you know, we see ourselves as staying very mission oriented, which is making sure the jail on Route 135 and on the Denham, Needham line is a safe place for staffing inmates and that when offenders reenter our communities, that they're as challenged and as resourced as possible. You know, the key term now is reentry. But in terms of what we do outside of that mission, which I'll just touch quickly, is we do a lot with the seniors in Westwood. We have on our I.O.K. program, we have five right now, which was higher. We have about 300 countywide, and that's the computerized telephone program that calls in every morning with a deputy sheriff right there, making sure the scene is okay. Our Yellow Dot program, it's a national program that provides emergency first responders at automobile accidents with the vital medical information to all injured parties. And there are 41 Westwood residents currently enrolled. Senior ID program, yeah, 21. LoJack Safety Net program. Currently, there are no Westwood residents on it, but, you know, we do like to promote it to the extent that people understand what it is. It's essentially, it's for those folks who unfortunately might have really dementia or young folks who have Down syndrome or autism. We fit them with a GPS bracelet, and with the local police, we create protocols and policies. So if they do tend to wander or do wander from that initial phone call, hopefully, you know, we're finding that person on the average within 30 minutes. So I just wanted to kind of let folks know that. And all of this is really done through us or the Council on Aging. You know, if you just kind of, those resources are there. And Joe Cannon is somebody who's very familiar around town. He's not here tonight, but he's our, he's our senior liaison. So, you know, most importantly, I think, and although those programs are incredibly important, and we consider them, again, very kind of complimentary to what your folks and what you guys do on the front lines every day. It's just a way to get to the community, share some of our resources, share some of those incredibly well-trained and qualified correction officers and their skills, and to maybe alleviate a little bit some of the burden or to at least enhance the lives of seniors and youths and many of the stakeholders in Westwood throughout Norfolk County. So, right now, you know, our mission continually shifts to a paradigm where it's more outside. Our staffing levels have decreased about 15 to 80 percent over several years. But we've taken that funding, which is a million or two dollars, one or two million dollars, you know, around there, and we've shifted it to recovery homes, mental health, community health centers, adult basic education programs, substance abuse programs, those providers in the nonprofit slash private sector who do great work every day. And without any great prior to authorship, we've decided that, you know, for these offenders to reenter into our communities with some type of safety net, but also accountability. Many of them on the bracelet, there is continual drug testing or community service that's demanded of them based on the criteria we develop as they leave. And the whole theory is, they come in, they don't have a lot of freedom, they're locked down most of the day, and they're quickly given the ability to earn more freedom within those four walls and then beyond. We have an alternative center on the Denham site, which houses up to 70 inmates. So an inmate can go from the main facility, which is, you know, technically a maximum minimum security facility, you know, real jail, and then end up in a lower level of security with more freedom, more access to programs. And then the final step may or may not be a bracelet program or recovery home bed or just completely, you know, released to the streets. And we've been bringing all these providers in throughout the Norfolk County area, working with the offenders almost within the first 30 to 60 days. Certainly within the last 90 days of their release, we want them connected to those areas and those folks who have identified as working in, you know, where they have deficits. By master laws, by statute, we have to assess every offender within 14 days. Within an hour or two, we're assessing them in terms of medical needs, if they're detoxing. You know, the opioid crisis unfortunately has turned us into about 25 to 35 percent of offenders are coming in detoxing. We're not built for that. You know, we have a medical unit, which is, where we'll put them for a few days as they detox. But for the most part, you know, they're coming in, it's cold turkey. If they're on some type of prescribed medication, even that is not really given to them until they hit a certain base level. We can assess where they're at. And then once that process is completed, you know, with one out of four, and certainly all of them almost immediately, we assess, we encourage, we can't mandate that they put in programs, and they will get up to 10 days of earned good time each month if they participate fully. And so it's really up to them. You know, I guess in the old days, I was considered kind of liberal. Some people thought I was kind of a waste of money, these rehabilitation programs on the four walls, what is it? But by all national studies and by really any authoritative kind of study locally, regionally, it indicates that when you connect inmates to outside resources before they're released, so they're falling right into that safety net almost seamlessly, the chance of them recidivating or recommitting a crime in our neighborhood because they're looking for money for drugs or dealing drugs or committing those crimes that, you know, knocking down someone's back door, being a complete nuisance to the local police or worse, unfortunately, that reduces dramatically when you tie them to those resources. And just finally, you know, we have had Northeast University in the jail for the past six years, measuring, A, how many inmates percentage-wise go through a reentry program in those areas I just alluded to? And of those, how many, really, I guess overall, what is our recidivism rate? And recidivism is a hard thing to really, to get anyone to agree on. But for us, it's three years reincarceration. Okay? And that's a broad term that you can tie different definitions to it. But for us, for the sake of this study, are they reincarcerated within three years? The national average in House of Corrections, wherever House of Correction, all our offenders are coming from the district courts. They're doing no more than two and a half years, on the average, you know, five to nine months. So they're moving quick. The average age now is about 26, 27. We are seeing a younger population. They're coming in with the opioid issue incredibly, you know, in a tough situation. You know, it's a substance abuse issue, and you'll hear 80% to 90% of all offenders in House Corrections jails have a drug and alcohol problem. But the fact of the matter, they may not have another deficit. They may not have a GED, they don't have any vocational training. And the employment piece is a big piece, and that's, I think, where we all fall short in Corrections, right? It's how do we get these guys in House Corrections? Because they can be great with substance abuse counseling, they can be great in terms of the mental health management. But you know, if they don't have a place to work and make a living, it really is a, it's a major obstacle. So those are the things we're trying to work on through federal grants. But NU, after six years in our facility, have taught us, and this is kind of draft form, but it's becoming almost an official kind of form. We're going to sit down in a couple of weeks, that our recidivism rate in Norfolk County in the House of Correction and Denham, the Sheriff's Office, is about 35 percent, which is half the national rate. Now, is it reentry? Is it because we're a different kind of county? You know, obviously in the more urban settings, you have a lot of different issues in terms of the gangs and even more deficits these kids are coming in with. But, you know, that is the average nationally. So we're competing against the average. We're half the average. I like to think it's because we focus so much attention on reentry in investing in outside stakeholders throughout, you know, Norfolk County, in that these offenders coming in, they're being drug tested, they're doing community service, or they're wrapping up their high school diploma outside of the jail. In the old days, it was just stopped there. We didn't get them by the time they wrapped up their sentence and got them their GED, which they earned on their own. But still, we have to get them before they wrap up. They wouldn't find that resource. So now we're just connecting much stronger resources, and it's slowing down, you know, the rate of these folks recommitting crimes in our neighborhoods. And whether it's Quincy, Westwood, Brookline, it doesn't matter. This opioid crisis, we know, is touching everybody. I know you folks are dealing with it, and nobody can hide or run from it or pretend it doesn't exist. And we feel like the best thing that we can do, because we're, you know, we're not the neurologists, you know, we're not the new science people. You know, a lot of the money now is trying to divert offenders from jail, counts are down nationally, which is a good thing. Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, Drug Court, that's all an alternative, you know, alternative to incarceration for these judges. And, you know, we support them any way we can in terms of transportation. And then if a client fails, then we deal with it when they come to us. So, you know, I think folks recognize that. They don't want to build their way out of this, you know, whether it's Congress or the State House, by building more jails and more beds, even though we have one of the most overcrowded, overcrowded jails in the state. You know, it was built for 300, our count today is well over 500. But it's also one of the safest jails in the state when it comes to inmate inmate or inmate on staff incidents of attack. So, so I'm just here again to just let you know what we're doing internally. That's our core mission. 97% of our budget goes to care and custody. The other 3% goes to the programs I mentioned. And mostly to thank you for your leadership, the police chief, the fire chief and the council agent director for allowing us to kind of come in town and do some little things, which helps morale with my staff because we have incredibly professional people who like to be out there. But also allows us to kind of, you know, to create programs that you don't necessarily need replicated in every town, that might alleviate some of the burden or at least enhance quality of life with some folks. So, thank you very much.
That's great. I'm just curious, Sheriff, when the, you had the 35% versus the national average, which is much higher, have you seen improvements? Have you seen it decline down to 35%? Or is that, are the programs helping lower?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, because they're looking at every individual program. We haven't got the numbers on it yet.
Yeah.
But anecdotally, when I'm here from my staff, and some of them have been out there, you know, even longer than me, and they're telling me that, that these outside resources are definitely helping these guys, you know, from recommitting crimes. But, you know, but there is a hidden stat there that is incredibly sad. And that's why, you know, statistics, 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 you know, three ways to lie. So, you know, I don't pretend that, I'm just telling you with the early conclusions, but here's kind of a very horrific stat is that we're losing more of these young offenders to death, basically. They're leaving us, they're, you know, they're doing great in the jail. But more than ever, this opioid crisis, it's, you know, we lose them within, you know, six months of being released. That's why it's just so imperative that we continue to kind of get them tied into the community, these resources.
And as you said, no town's immune to it.
Right.
Yeah. Any comments, questions?
No, thank you, Sheriff. I know you're doing a good job. I see your liaison at the senior center all the time, so.
Oh, do you? Okay.
John?
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations to all.
Well, appreciate you coming in.
Okay, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Don't be a stranger.
I won't, I'll be back.
Okay.
I won't talk as long next time.
See you, guys.
Good night.
Don't wait seven years to come back.
I'll see you, guys.
All right, take care.
Okay. Christine, our favorite.
Tell me, yeah.
This will become your favorite. Let me just tell you. I say with great sarcasm, no, it's complicated and I, the next agenda item is, pertains to the appointment process. So the Board of Selectmen appoints, how many, about?
500.
500 positions. And that includes some staff and a tremendous amount of volunteers. So it is a big process. And I don't know how many years ago, maybe six or so years ago, Christine undertook, it's probably more than that, Streamlining It More, where it was hard to know how long people had been serving. There's just so much tracking that needs to be done. So we're going to start tonight with a review of the steps involved and see if we can make some decisions on some pieces that are ready to act on now, knowing that you're going to be coming back a few times. So would you like to give an overview and then we can walk through what we should get done tonight?
Sure. So the process is a multi-step concurrent process. First, we notified all the individuals who are up for reappointment in the year 2016. So all the terms that end June 30th, 2016, have been notified that they are up for reappointment and express to contact the selectman's office and let us know if they're interested in being reappointed. In the sheet in your packet, so anyone that is in blue has been contacted but not gotten back to us. Anyone in green has responded that they are interested in being reappointed. So we have heard from a fair amount of people, but there's still some stragglers out there that we will follow up, which brings us into step two. So we'll start following up with chairmans and clerks on all those boards, saying, hey, we haven't heard back from so-and-so. We're just wondering if they're interested in being reappointed for another term. And we'll do that throughout the next month, month and a half, pretty much in through the summer months. Once that's done, we will start bringing, at the next meeting, we'll start bringing full boards for the Board of Selectmen to consider reappointments for. We try to do each board that is completely done at a time, instead of trying to do piece by piece. And then as that goes on, we will also be able to sort of gauge where some vacancies might be and where places need to be filled. Some of the boards do have large amounts of people on them that don't really have a term number that limits them. Others do have term limits, others have, people can only serve for two terms and must step off for a year. That can sometimes be difficult depending on the board, but also great because it brings fresh people onto that board as well. Then we, as the board makes those appointments, we notify each individual and we ask them to come in and get sworn in by the town clerk, which she has indicated she'd like to do a swearing-in ceremony. So we're going to work on trying to schedule that, probably first, late June, early July, probably after 4th of July, if it goes into July. And then that's pretty much it. So we'll roll through these for the next couple of meetings.
Okay. So you have given us all these lists and noted as green or blue or people who are already on. I was thinking we would go through all the staff appointments tonight and leave all the others until we can do it more completely?
Yeah.
Does that sound all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Pretty much all the staff are.
So I'm going to go through the ones I think we should do. And if you have any, not, not to say we're making the motion yet, but just the committees, and then see if I've missed anything or compare notes. So we have members of the Alcohol Review Committee, all of whom are staff, the Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator, the Building Survey Board, ex officio members of the Cemetery Commission, the Central Norfolk Regional Emergency Planning Committee, the Chief Procurement Officer. I guess we could do the ex officio of the Commission on Disability, right? Community Communications and Technology Advisory Board, the ex officio members. And Conservation Commission, ex officio. Compensation agent, thank you. All right. Let's see. Nothing on Council on Aging, Denham, Westwood. DPW Director, do we actually do those appointments now, Mike? Where they're in black, DPW Director, Fire Chief. Should we include all those tonight? They used to be that we would motion for reappointment.
So they're, they have active contracts.
So that one's by contract.
Yep.
And Chief Scoble as well?
Chief Scoble's contract.
Okay.
As a fire chief, but not as a police officer.
Yep.
Right.
Got it. Okay. Just want to be sure. Emergency Management Agency.
Sorry, I got to update that in Westwood Water.
Yeah.
All right, John.
Since John's sitting here, you might want to update that.
Yeah. Emergency Management Agency, Fair Housing Director, Forest Warden, Hearing Officer for Buildings and Fire, Housing Partnership for Buildings and Fire, Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee, ex officio. The ex officio members, oh, we're going to hold off on the Islington, no, not the Islington, we're going to do that. Ex officio members of the Islington Center Task Force, the Cronin Public Service Award Committee, staff member and ex officio, so we'll just do those two. I'm going to hold off on Long Range Financial Planning.
Okay.
Okay. And MWRA Advisory Board. We're going to hold on Obed Baker. And, hm? Haven't gotten that yet. Let's see, ex officio of the OPEB. Do we have any issues there, Mike, with John Antonucci staying on? Can we proceed with that? That's not a.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, we'll do those.
If you want, if you want somebody else, you can tell us.
Okay, so, let's do it, and if we can address it later if you want to. Parking clerk, pedestrian and bike safety committee, the ex officio members. The Public Employees Committee, can we do that? Or is that, does that move? Does that adjust?
I think that moves.
Yeah, I have a, I have a pack. I don't, I'm not sure that that changes, I don't know how quickly that's.
So, we'll hold that one, okay?
Yeah.
Check into that.
Check with the unions.
Public Safety Task Force, the ex officio members. Let's see, Police Chief is contract. And we'll hold on any of the planning board-related ones. Register of Voters, we'll do Dottie, the staff person. Roy London Award Committee, ex officio, we'll do that. Storm Water Management Committee, we'll do those, and if there are any additions, we can handle that separately. Do we know where we are in the Town Bylaw Review Committee? Mike, is that going to continue?
Um.
Do you want to, should we hold?
I, I'd hold on that one.
Okay.
I think they said they want it to end this year.
All right.
Town Council.
Town Council, do we do that one? No, yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. Town Council, Veterans Day, Memorial Day Committee, the staff people that are involved with that. Westwood Environmental Action Committee, we have a couple of ex officio members who are town staff. And, okay, that's it. So, let's just take a pause. We have, all that were highlighted, that our staff people asked a few questions along the way, so we have some holds. Can we just do a blanket motion to approve all that had been noted without going through all the names?
Do we have to add you? Because I'm coming off, do we have to add you?
We'll do the selectmen stuff in a moment.
Okay.
We'll do that separate.
All right.
Okay?
This is just staff.
Yeah, just staff for all that have been mentioned. Ex officio or the actual sign, so it's a combination, but only staff appointments for all that were noted. Did you, you're comfortable with all that?
Yeah.
So, I'll take a motion that we make those appointments.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, so, we have that one done.
Okay.
So, maybe we use a different color on all those next time.
Yeah, those are going to be pretty much gone. We're going to just take the names off.
All right, that's easy.
Yeah, but, you know, it's.
Put it in the back as done.
You'll do what you think.
Yeah.
Okay, so, then we have selectmen appointments. Let's see. We have, all of us would serve on the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Yes.
And the Chair for the Norfolk County Selectment Association, Emergency Management Agency, Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee, and the Cronin Public Service Award.
Yeah.
That's, that's been standard. And we will also need representation on the following committees, Aid to the Elderly, the Islington Task Force, Long Range Planning, Public Safety, Roy London, and the Environmental Action Committee. So, Mr. Walsh, you still want to be on the Islington Center Task Force?
I will stay on that task force, although the meeting Thursday, I won't be there this Thursday, but yes, I will stay on.
Okay, and I will continue to do Long Range, Public Safety, and Roy London.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hearn was Aid to the Elderly and Infirmed, and then we have WAC that he also served on.
I don't mind doing the Aid to the Elderly.
Okay, and you know I appointed Pat at town meetings, so unofficially. Would you like to do the Westwood Environmental Action Committee?
Sure.
We're going to be talking about that in a few minutes.
Great.
There'll probably be other opportunities that will come up as well, and I would welcome either of you to come at any time to Long Range Planning, and I think we can just post that as a selectmen's meeting with the regular posting, can't we?
Two people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think it'd be good to do that more often. We've, we've actually moved them more to evening meetings, but I think it'd be good to have more involvement in that, because I think it just plays such an important role. So, um.
Long Range Planning?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think we all saw how it played out this year with so much more discussion with the Finance Commission and making some definite action for a town meeting.
And just so you know, at the Norfolk County Selectmen's Association, nothing happened last year, not even a meeting, so.
I, I was really worried about that. Okay, so, can we do these as a group, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll take a motion based on what was just said about the Chair doing the, the first four mentioned, and I'll continue to do Long Range, Public Safety, Roy London. Mr. Walsh shall do Aid to the Elderly and the Islington Center Task Force, and Mr. Hickey doing the Westwood Environmental Action Committee. So, a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So, Christine, anything else you want us to get done tonight?
Um, no, just, the other thing is just to take a look at that appointed handbook. It, I don't need an answer tonight. If you want to get back to me on edits, it's something that we'd like to try to get to, not just newly appointed officials, but all appointed officials.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And what you sent us before was that in Word? It's, we can track the edits?
Yeah, it might be in PD, no, it is Word, what I sent you. If not, just, I can resend it in Word.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'd like to have, we'd like to try to get that.
I think this is great.
A lot of towns and cities are starting to do that. It's a, it's a really good refresher. It helps with some committees that might not know exactly what open meeting law is and maybe holding meetings in places they shouldn't be holding meetings and.
Can we also give people the copy of the most recent open meeting law? That's online.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the idea.
Part of the packet?
Yeah, part of the packet, all of that.
Okay, and people still have to, when they're on boards and commissions, they have to do the ethics thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I assume Christine will put it on their new website, so.
It will go on the new website.
People lose the book, they'll be able to access it.
Yeah. So, do we have anything we want to say for the public tonight in terms of openings? Or what you would like people to do at this point?
Right now, with so many people still not getting back to me, I don't have a very good idea on where we're going to need some. We, I know we're going to have some coming up. I did talk to one clerk who looks like two people are coming off Council on Aging, but that's not definite yet. And then, at this point, we have a lot of people that haven't responded, so I'd like to get those people follow up, spend the next week and a half following up with people and then I'll have a better idea.
Okay, so, what would be great is if you can alert Melinda at WestCAT that once we know what positions are open, that we'd like to run something on the station as one of the ways of letting the public know. So, I, I can say with confidence, we'll have openings. And we handle many boards and commissions, but there are also the openings that the moderator appoints, and Finance Commission, Infirmative Building Committee being the two larger ones. There's the Personnel Board as well. So, you might want to coordinate with Alice for posting on the same venue or the same media outlets, so that the community can get a good idea of what, what opportunities exist. I think we saw in the past year, many new people stepping up. We certainly saw that in the election. Thank you, Mr. Hickey. So, I think it'd be great to continue that trend, that people can find some opportunities that might be reasonable time commitments that they can make and see what it's like to be involved in town government and making contributions back. And I think all of us can attest to the rewards that come with that, as people did very well at town meeting. Well, that's also good.
Yeah.
Nothing wrong with that, but I know we'll still have other openings, so, good opportunities. Any comments from anybody?
No.
You're good, okay.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Anything else we need to do on that? All right.
Go ahead.
Just the stats, so lots of time for comment.
Yeah, we'll get a few things out of the way, which is good. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is to talk about the Westwood Environmental Action Committee bylaws again.
I told you you didn't have to come back, but you came back anyway.
Well, it's nice of you guys to come back. So, we took this up back in late April, had a draft of the proposed bylaws, which were great to have and a good step forward, and we had a few comments. And tonight, we have a revised version in front of us and all nicely highlighted. And, Mike, do you have anything you want to say on this?
No, I think that the additions and the changes that were suggested for the most part worked out well, and we've incorporated them. There were a couple of instances where, in one instance, it was duplication, so we took it out, another instance, it didn't make sense, and we didn't change it.
Which didn't make sense.
I, it was something about Selectmen, what was it, the Selectmen Committee?
It said simple majority of members appointed, and you put, you changed it to by the, the selectmen, and it should be by the, you guys.
Oh, right.
Appoint your simple majority.
Oh, yes. Oh, that was an misunderstanding.
Yeah, I think it just makes understanding.
A simple, their quorum, their simple majority is established by their committee.
Oh.
Like their. But the simple majority, but the members are not appointed by us, the member WAC.
Yeah, but that, it was.
The way it read, it wasn't right, right?
Where are we? Which section are we looking at?
Section three point one, quorum.
Appointed to the committee.
Oh, it was appointed to the committee. Sorry, not by. But appointed to the selectmen.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So, we just took out the word selectmen.
Okay, so, that essentially says if you have seven people.
Yeah.
That are appointed.
Appointed.
Then, your quorum is a simple majority of that, so four.
So, we don't have to specify?
You don't have to say by the selectmen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the only thing that we took out.
Okay. So, in terms of, I think the only kind of sticky point was the issue of remaining on the committee for more than one term without stepping down for one year.
Two terms, right?
So, now, it's two terms.
Yeah.
Two complete terms.
And then.
Step down for one year.
Okay.
Unless, there's no one.
Oh, okay.
No one steps down to fill a position.
Right.
That was the only thing.
That was the only thing, because otherwise.
Hardly bursting at the seams.
Yeah.
So far. We just missed out that campaign.
Okay.
John's going to fix that, aren't you?
I tell you, he is. Hopefully. Working on it.
So, we, so, we did add the word, that you have unless there are no candidates.
Okay, candidates, yes.
Great.
Yes.
And we also have the reduction of the number of meetings per year.
Right.
I think it gives you a little more flexibility without being onerous, right? We don't want to start you off with any, we have to.
You have to.
We, we had to cancel one because there was no quorum, for example.
That, or you have weather, it's hard to reschedule. Yeah, there are different things that come up, so you need some flexibility in summer, certainly. So, any final, yeah, go ahead. Proceed.
Just make a motion.
Go ahead.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed bylaws for the Westwood Environmental Action Committee as revised and provided to us this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So, let Christine know, or we figure out what openings exist, and we can add that to the list of opportunities for people.
So, for us, there was a question last year, who was actually appointed and who was not.
So, Christine can follow.
So, is, is it possible when you've made the final decisions, if, to let us know if there is any new appointment? Because there was particularly one person that we weren't clear, Annie, if she was a member.
Oh, yeah, no, she's definitely not.
She's a member or not.
So, you can, and anybody who is appointed knows they are, because, as you know, you receive a letter. And at either a group setting with Dottie Powers or individually, you are sworn in. And if that hasn't happened, they're not appointed.
They're not appointed.
Unless and until, and, well, it's hard to, there's five hundred positions, some people don't respond to the letter and don't actually get appointed. Technically, that means they shouldn't be voting on anything.
Right.
But Dottie goes through that periodically, and I think touches base with you.
Yeah, we try to follow up with the same people, so.
Yeah, Christine, remind us.
And so, for the ex officio, it would be, there is Mr. Hickey, and then, there is the Chair, the DPW Director, right?
And Canaries.
And Canaries. So, they, they should be included in all the emails with the agenda.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you again.
Good night. Good night.
See you tomorrow. See you on Sunday or Saturday.
Saturday.
Good luck, great work.
There you go. Okay, so, new business. We have a few people here to help us out with this. We have some requests to post and fill open positions here in the town. There are a few. We have a retirement, we have a new position, and we have a merging of positions somewhat resulting from retirements. So, let's start with the first one, which is the GIS specialist, and we have Lynn Fielding, who will be retiring this summer. So, who's going to take this one? Who wants to just mention, if you want?
Just summarize more for the public.
Well, why don't you just talk about, you know, the function that Lynn performs?
Lynn is the GIS specialist here in town, does all the, any work related to GIS mapping, not only with respect to applied GIS, but also with related work. So, if there's any other databases, or any other software applications that even touches GIS, she has her hands in that as well. So, it is a key part of the IT department. I'm Donna McClellan, haven't met you yet, I'm the IT director here in town. And it's something that, Lynn's been here for 10 years, a little over 10 years. So, it doesn't seem, I know, life goes quickly. So, we're looking forward to the next step. We've just slightly changed some wording within the job description, but nothing that changes the intent of the job description. It stayed essentially the same. We've, over the last year, I've kept track, as well as Lynn, of other GIS positions that have come up in Massachusetts specifically. And there's been several, and we're in line with salary and a description. So, we feel very confident. They've all been filled, so no one is out there still looking, so hopefully, we'll get a qualified candidate.
It's a full-time position?
It is a full-time position, always has been.
Yep, just wanted to be sure. Go ahead.
Donna, so just for the public, what does GIS do?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Geographic, sorry.
Yeah, there are lots of acronyms I know.
Yep.
Never really know.
Geographic Information Systems. And we started a GIS system here in town in early 1990s, was started in the DPW department. And Betha Hearn, who was the director before me, she saw GIS as being an integral part of the town. Previously, it was just for the purpose and benefit of the DPW department. And she evolved it into a more townwide position that would help every single department, and it truly has become that. So, in 1998, we started developing full GIS data. And this is mapping of everything in town, from, you know, parcels, buildings, sewers, all infrastructure is mapped, rock walls. We have light poles, you know, and then we also have, you know, open space, sidewalks. Anything you could possibly imagine is on a map. And they're called layers, and these layers can be, I sort of look at it, remember the old Britannica, where there'd be this see-through film? And you'd like, oh, I love those, you know, with the body, and then you'd have like the skeleton put on it. So, you could consider GIS very similar to that, where you have a base layer showing the outline of the town. And then each of these successive layers, which are built from data in town, and also mapping by sometimes flying overhead with an airplane and taking, you know, a look and see wetlands and things like that. You could build a view of what a certain area, or what a project will look like. We used it extensively in the University Ave development. You know, we would look at, I remember us doing, you know, what-if scenarios of what certain areas would look like. Lynn does a lot of help with, sometimes outside organizations that look to get maps that would be targeted, like the fields. I saw that she did a town map downstairs, that's a trifold, which, I didn't realize that.
She did all the veteran bricks.
All the vet, she mapped every veteran brick in the park area there. So, you could go in and find out where your brick is, and then find it. And we started a long time ago doing the cemetery, and now she's expanded that, and with the new cemetery and the expansion there. And I think that's really helpful for family members going in and trying to find their loved ones. So, that's actually a big part of it. So, there's a lot of pieces that you don't even think about, is GIS. And we started early. Many other towns have now caught up, and they're, you know, continuing it. But we were one of the early adopters of some of that technology, and I think, we're really proud of that piece of it. And we have a very evolved GIS as a result of that.
Do we have the interface with Dedham-Westwood Water District? Do you have the water lines?
We do have the water lines.
Do you have the water lines?
And Dedham-Westwood Water District, we exchange information all the time. Specifically, Dedham-Westwood Water also provides us with the data that we use to actually bill our sewer as well. So, our data actually flows really easily between the two.
Nora, I imagine you use it a lot, and the land use uses it.
All the time, all the time. And I'm working with Lynn right now to put together a system where we can monitor all the open space, and how much of it is in conservation restriction, how much of it has some deed form of restriction and other forms. So, we have a good idea of what we have, what still needs to be protected.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, just that we, Lynn is, you know, retiring at the end of the summer. We'd like to get going on posting this, because, you know, the summer's kind of a snoozy time for hiring, so we'd like to get it out there, get some candidates in the pipeline, and then interview them over the summer.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
We would.
Absolutely, yeah.
One, or you want to do them all together?
One. I'll do it in one or two.
I would like to authorize the Human Resources Director to work with the Town Administrator, Community Economic Development Director and IT, to post and fill the position of the GIS Specialist.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? None. Okay, the next one, Community Development Administrative Assistant. This is a new position, and Nora, I'd love for you to give us an overview of this position, and somewhat of the nature of the work, how this fits into the land use department.
So, about a year and a half ago, all of the land use departments were combined into the Department of Community and Economic Development. So, that includes building, planning, zoning, conservation, health, housing, and historic preservation. And we made that change, but keeping current, same number of staff persons that we had prior to that change. Between combining the departments and the increased activity we've seen, both at University Station and elsewhere in the town, we're, we feel like we're treading water right now. So, we requested this position in the upcoming budget, which was just approved at a town meeting, for an administrative person to serve all of the departments. Would be a function that would coordinate applications, so say you're coming in and you need to file an application for the planning board to renovate a commercial structure, where there's also a need for a zoning permit for one reason or another, or there's conservation, conservation commission requires an approval of the project as well. This one administrative staff person could walk you through all the applications, accept all the applications, file them with the town clerk's office, post the notices, send out the butters lists, pretty much handle the project from the administrative point of view. We're working on an online permitting system, which Donna's helping us with, and we expect that to be up and running, you know, within the year, hopefully sooner than that.
A homegrown product?
Oh, no. No.
We're in the process of selecting, selecting the preferred bidder right now.
Yes.
So, this staff person would also be the department's representative, who would handle, who would be the point of contact for entering the permitting applications into the software, and for making sure that everyone stays on top of it. At least in the beginning, we think, you know, it may take a little time for people to get used to it, and we want a single point of contact. So, it'd be an administrative person who would handle everything from answering the phones for the departments, handling walk-ins, directing someone to the right department where they need to go to, helping us with filing, and walking applications from beginning to end. Be one person that would know everything about a particular application, and where the various approvals stand.
So, you want an uber-organized person?
Yes, we do.
Who's very good at record-keeping and?
Record-keeping and efficiency.
And?
And also very customer-friendly.
Any questions? Donna, okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Human Resources Director to work with the Community and Economic Development Director to post the position of Community Development.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None. And then lastly, we have the Housing and Zoning Agent, and this is actually merging two part-time positions together.
It is. So, we had a Housing Director, Jill Onderdonk, who actually retired the end of last September. So, we've been trying to fill in since then for the work that she had done. We have Louise Rossi, our zoning administrator, who is retiring August 1st. So, the, or effective August 1st, right. So, I, both of those positions, Jill and Louise did a fantastic job with both of their positions, but they were both part-time. So, when someone came in who needed help with housing, and Jill was not in the office on her off days, or where someone needed help with zoning, and Louise was not there, it was always a bit of an inconvenience to the residents coming in, to the other staff who had to do their best to fill in and cover the gap. So, the suggestion is that we combine those two positions, so that we have a full-time person on staff who handles both zoning and housing issues. And that way, they can adjust their time according to who's coming in and needs help. So, if they're working on a zoning matter, and a resident comes in and needs help with a housing issue, then they can just switch hats and do that work. So, we'll have someone who's available all the hours that the town is open for business.
And not that this would happen often, but there might be times where neither are active? And what do you see maybe that person doing, or is that catch-up time with a lot of administrative responsibility?
I'd be shocked if there was ever downtime. There might not be someone coming into the office, but there's plenty of work. So, this single position would now handle the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Housing Partnership, and the Fair Housing Committee work, in addition to their administrative responsibilities. So, I don't think there'll be downtime.
Any questions?
No.
Done?
So, I'll, you want to do this motion, John? I'll do it. The, I move that we, the Board of Selectmen authorize the Human Resources Director to work with the Town Administrator, Community Economic Development Director, to fill the position of the Housing and Zoning Agent, to a full-time position.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Aye. opposed? None. So, great, those three are, all sound very important to the ongoing operations of your departments. And let us know if any issues come up that you need our help with, but otherwise, we'll look forward to hearing about your fabulous hires. Not many opportunities to get full-time positions here in town, so hopefully, that will be highly sought after.
Sure.
It's a great place to work, so, good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Mike, I know you had it down as FYI, but the Blue Hills Regional School, I thought we should talk about a little bit. Okay. So, for the community's sake, we, Westwood, are one of the, one of the municipalities who have the opportunity to send students to the Blue Hills Regional School, and we do, but we're one of the smaller communities, I believe, that participate in that program. And it provides a great, great opportunity for certain students in vocational field of studies while they're in high school. So, we have a request before us that we don't necessarily have to actually take action on, but the budget for the Blue Hills School has been increased, voted to be increased on April 26th this year, to increase the operating budget by just under $1 million, and we all participate in that. So, the question before us tonight is, do we want to act against that? Because otherwise, no action means we have supported. So, my questions aren't whether or not we support it personally, of course, we would support the operating budget. I remember the capital issues before were something quite different. But it seems to me that the way this is structured, and it's cast this way, is that to only have 45 days to vote against it at a town meeting is fine if you have representative town meeting, but not so fine when you have open town meeting. And did we know about this leading into it? So, that's really my biggest concern.
So, here's what I found out, and I called Charlie, Charlie was here just to start.
I saw.
And so, what he told me was, they received notice by the Mass School Building Assistance Program very late in April. Indicated to them that they, that if they voted to do this, they would, they could put in an application to do some renovation work. They needed to do a feasibility study, and prepare the plans, some plans to submit. It's on an accelerated timeframe. If they're successful in getting that, there's one thing, will they actually be reimbursed or be incorporated into the?
So, it's not for operations, it's for soft costs related to a building program?
Yeah, it's, exactly. And it's coming out of E and D, their E and D account, which is monies they already have set aside. So, they're just appropriating from that account to pay for this work. If, in fact, they get approved, they'll be reimbursed. If they don't, they will have spent the money. But they feel that it's very necessary, that these capital improvements have been long needed, and they've got, got some indication that they may be successful in this attempt.
I have a little issue with that being related to a building project, and it's represented here as being for the operating budget. Doesn't seem to, it? So, did we just not have good information before? They gave us a letter. Yeah, but that's not operating budget money, that they're saying they need, it's for school building. Just, if you could follow up, it's not like we're not, you know.
How many students do we have?
It goes up and down by very, those small numbers.
This is not going to cost anybody any money. Technically speaking, what you can, you can look at it, if they spend it, they don't get reimbursed, that, yeah, that money wouldn't have been available for something else, but that's the cost. It's, they're not going to ask any city or town to appropriate into some money. Two towns have already been in a position where they could vote on it for some reason. Avon and Randolph, I think, were the two towns. And they, it's, yes. How it came to take, we will do it in a short timeframe, but they were.
Because we had that town meeting and after that town.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we send them a letter that says something like, in the future, any notification for either the spring or fall town meeting? We would appreciate hearing at least 30 days in advance. We'd be able to respond by incorporating it into town meeting, late in the game for something like this. But when it comes right after town meeting, we're not going to spend $10,000 to hold a town meeting.
Actually, came, what, the day of town meeting?
Yeah, came the day.
Yeah. The day of.
So, if we agree, you know, I think we should take action as opposed to doing nothing, it'd be nice to send a letter back with our support of it.
I kind of figured you were going to lean in that direction, and I even talked about drafting a letter, putting it back, to say, well, we could send this letter, so.
Yeah.
Never got around to it, that's all.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we should go and make sure that Charlie knows that we need his support in the future to encourage them to act on a different timeline, so.
Because they put in the application, Mike, so they must know, at some point, they're going to hear, you know what I mean? So, it's not like, this, to us, this comes out of the clear blue, but had there been a letter saying, this is what we're applying for, and it could be late, you know, we can at least put it as a contingent on the town meeting warrant.
Right, and you could have probably been paying your acting on a day. It got stamped in, but I never saw it until a few days later.
Yeah. So, something that's just polite, but puts that request in. So, I'm willing to accept a motion that we support this request, and authorize the Town Administrator to send in a letter acknowledging that.
So, moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. That'd be good, Mike, if you can just circulate it, so we can see it before it goes out?
Yep.
Okay. So, next up on the agenda, we have old business, and the agenda item is a report on goals and accomplishments for the past year. And given what I said at the beginning of the meeting, when we were going over all the things that were accomplished at the beginning of the year, I don't think we really need to repeat them. But the document is a good one for us to review as we think about the goals for the upcoming year. And I know I've already had the opportunity to share some of my thoughts with our Town Administrator, and I encourage my colleagues to take the time to meet with him and go through this, not necessarily, you know, requiring that we add more to what might already be a robust list, but we actually concluded a lot of things. And, Mike, you and I were talking about that earlier. But coming up, we'll have two big capital projects going on at the same time, which is not minor. So, while we might not have town meeting action associated with them, we certainly have a lot of work going on in the town to make sure that they're successful. So, those would definitely stay on the list, and I think the ongoing activity at University Station that requires everybody's attention and staff attention, certainly. And I would ask, if you can, to talk to Nora about what might be going on in her department, inclusive of planning?
Well, I'll get feedback tomorrow.
Department activity?
Department has, I mean, DHED.
That would be great. So, maybe come the end of June, when we finish up the year, we can bring up the new goals list and approve that for going forward. So, we've got a few weeks here to provide input or ask questions. Okay? John, do you have any questions on that?
No, I don't.
Okay. Don't hesitate to ask Mike about it afterwards, and if we need to bring anything up at a meeting in between now and having a new set of goals for next year, we can do that too. We don't have a lot.
Yeah, I think the only, the only comment I would make, and it's probably educated oneself, is about the permitting process. And I think I may have spoken too about this, but I sense there's a little bit of a gap in the demo process. So, then, so, someone buys a property, they have utilities cut and capped, and the town has no notice. And I think that's a gap. I just, we don't feel too deep tonight, but when it happened in my neighborhood, I thought that was a little odd, that there's a front-end loader on someone's lawn, cutting the water and sewer line, having N-Stop cut the electric, but the town has no notice of that. So, just something I would like to understand a little better going forward.
Yes, see if anything can be done to improve it. Yeah. It might just be the way the regulations are, but it is leaving a gap in time.
Well, I think it's probably also the growth in the number of tear downs.
Yeah.
Right? In the past, it wasn't as common to be doing that, but I, that's the one thing I picked up, and I've heard from other people the same concern.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, one thing too, Mike, and I know, I remember from the letter, that one of the residents brought me is a Highland Glen issue, and what's going on with that, the sale by equity.
Highland in Westwood.
So are.
Yeah.
So are affordable housing.
Right, issue.
Both being sold by equity.
Right.
And it being sold by, the nice thing about them was they were owned by one entity.
Right.
They've been put in two different, two different buckets for equity. One's the affordable housing bucket, the other one's the not affordable housing bucket. This, unfortunately, is not, no longer considered an affordable housing project. So, it's in a different bucket, we've got a different owner, and the ability to coordinate between the two owners. Maybe it's more difficult to kind of find the one owner. So, unfortunately, we did take it to a good target.
I only know because the letter had my name on it, and the residents were calling me, saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah. For several years, we've been trying to find a way to solve, resolve that problem, and we just found out, over a month ago, that equity was selling.
So, Highland Glen is perpetuity, are those?
Highland Glen is perpetuity. This one was an earlier version that had a, actually, term. So, the court had decided if the agreement between the town and developer didn't have a term in it, it was considered perpetuity if you did a zoning change. That's where equity, that's where Highland Glen fell. This one, because it was an early version, even though it had a zoning change, had a 20-year term on it. And the 20-year term got picked up by Mass Housing, when they refinanced it several years ago for McNeil. And so, in 2013, came off. It still counts to some extent. The DHED is continuing to count some of the units, but it doesn't count 100% anymore. And won't count at all, unless we can.
So, will that throw our numbers off?
No, actually, we, we, we. No, actually, we, we, we protected ourselves.
With university.
The eventual, that with university, that we, what we did was when we set it all up, we made sure that if this fell off, which we thought it might, that we would still have achieved 10 percent. So, we still have 10 percent.
Just want to tell you, I was on the board in 1970 when that was created. I mean, 20 years.
20 years, you thought would never go.
It was, it was those 20 years, though, that always continued.
And here you are, Tom.
Whenever we negotiated.
And here you are.
In a way.
Well, okay, keep us posted on that, but that certainly is a important item, and probably just that 10 percent affordability will remain an important item as we talk about building out the rest of University Station.
But it's the rest of University Station, the thing we have to remember is that the, that the denominator of the equation changes on a decade. So, 2020, the denominator will change by the number of units we have, and that could put us back 100 percent.
So, we need to plan for that.
So, we need to be careful.
Yeah.
Okay. So, now we have, looking ahead at our future Board of Selectmen meetings, I'm going to, I'm going to put out some dates, and you guys need to say.
I did mine too, so.
Okay. I'm, right now, cannot meet on the 6th of June, so I'm going to ask if we can meet on the 13th and 27th.
I have no, because there's a football wine and dine and nine at the Norfolk Golf Course for the football, freshman football team, at which the parents are playing.
Which date?
On the 13th.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like, if you want to move it to a Tuesday.
Tuesdays are really bad for me.
Okay. So.
We'll do the 20th.
We'll do the 20th.
Well, right now, we're only at May 16th.
Correct.
And so, that's a whole month away. You guys have to speak up. Do we have any public hearings scheduled or needing to be scheduled right now?
The only one that I know of is, there might be an alcohol. Maybe somebody. May, I forget. Janice asked me about future selectmen meetings, I told her I would tell her Tuesday. She needs to get a public hearing. And we have the one just came in today. What just came in today? Whole relocation.
Whoa.
No. Prime dealership on Glacier Ave. Hold on, I'll tell you. But those have to be at least minimum two weeks out anyways, because we have to host and.
Yeah, my question for you would be more along the lines of if we waited until the 20th to have our next meeting, does that present a problem?
So, almost a month. What is a month?
Yes.
As opposed to a problem for me, though.
All right, here's the deal. Let's go with the 20th.
Okay.
And if we need a meeting, we're going to have to get one scheduled on an off day.
Oh, Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza. Change in license request. Four, six, 20.
Perfect. Okay. So, is that probably a change of management?
Probably.
Okay, then July 11th?
Good for me.
And I'd like to suggest August 8th and 22nd.
I can do the 8th. I don't see why I can't do the 22nd, but I was just thinking, school will be back in that week?
Nope.
No, it'll be the next week.
Oh, that's what you mean, the following week, right.
Okay, so why don't we do the 8th and 22nd, if nobody has a problem with those?
No. I'm in LA.
And lastly, the 12th and the 26th? Now, John, well, it could happen for either of you, if there's any public school things going on on, on Monday nights, you wouldn't even know yet, but we can tentatively.
Most of that stuff is on Thursdays, and that's September, anyway.
Do, Christine, can you check as well about any religious holidays?
September, yeah.
I think I start in October.
I think they are.
I think you're right.
They're later this year.
Correct.
The calendars I usually look at have.
Okay. So, we'll consider that September 1st tentative, but if we can all hold those dates otherwise?
Sometimes they're on my phone, but not this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a chance in October, one, those October.
Okay, so that's all we, that's all we need to, any future calendars, just flag those. And one of the things that we'll have to keep in mind is the first week in September is when we have to decide if we're opting out of a fall town meeting. Otherwise, there is a fall town meeting, and the date is predetermined. So, that means come the end of August, we'll need to make that decision.
22nd?
I believe so. Okay?
The 12th is the date. You need to make it by November 15th.
Is that the date? I thought it was earlier. Okay, so then we have till the 12th.
Oh, okay.
So, we need to be sure to get a, a meeting in where that is on our minds, so I would suggest that for August to have, maybe early August, to have a discussion about that, start having the discussion. I don't think it's a given that we need to have it, but I think that's something that you need to check with department heads on this summer. We certainly have had the need the past few years, but I don't want to have one for the sake of just having one.
Okay, that would.
Anybody disagree?
To go to that Fin call meetings and.
Yeah, it's a whole bunch of work.
A whole bunch of reasons not to.
There is, there is an awful lot of work, and I have heard some things that earlier was paying attention that made it sound like we might need to have one, but for the life of me, I can't remember what those specific points are.
I think it was maybe the Islington RFP.
Isn't it an RFP?
That one didn't, that one didn't get me there.
Yeah.
But pushing that, that was the last meeting, I think you kind of.
That's too fast.
That's right.
That's too fast.
I, it's funny.
We have to have a lot of process around that before there's.
Even on the committee, I said the same thing, oh, that's way too fast. I mean, we don't.
No.
I was ambitious, I think.
We, we've got to be very thoughtful and deliberate on that, since we do everything. So, that's that for the regular items. We have two sets of minutes that have been amended, so you need to look at the more current session printout. And John, given you weren't there.
I'm going to abstain.
Yeah, I think that's probably a reasonable thing to do. So, we have our very long meeting on April 25th, and Christine provided us with an updated version of those minutes, and the changes have been highlighted. Thank you for doing that, Christine. So, Mr. Walsh, I'll let you give it a look through and see what you think.
All 15 pages?
Yeah.
Okay, after reviewing the changes, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as written for April 25th, 2016.
And out of necessity, I'll second those. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstained. One abstention. So, that's April 25th, and then we have May 2nd meeting minutes right before town meeting.
Not revised, so I will, yes, so we do, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes as written for the May 2nd.
And I will second out of necessity, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Abstention?
One abstention.
Okay. That's easy. Good. So, that's it. That's your first meeting, Mr. Hickey. What do you think?
Sounds great.
All good. Okay, public press, no questions.
He might even.
Geez, what a change from our last meeting.
Yeah, well, I think people have been participating quite a bit. Yes, they're meetinged out, as are we. So, we have nothing for executive session tonight, so the process is, we don't do executive session minutes unless we are in executive session. So, they get held over to future meetings, and we have our next meeting.
It's going to be June 20th.
June 20th, not till June 20th unless we hear otherwise.
Right.
And for the time being, we'll continue to meet here.
Yeah.
Okay?